Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three city meeting. Doctor or Stanford pledge, please. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bod.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? Did you manage? Do you have any late changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you will, please, I'd like to add a item to the action agenda number five. And this would be the authorization for the mayor to sign Shelton Youth Connections, a request for these funds and NEPA certification. As you'll remember, this was a project that's council wrote a letter of support to as well as the rooming house. Definition change within our zone code was to address this project. So this is timely for show these connection and receiving their funds from the federal government to move forward with this project. So bringing that to tonight's late edition.
Thank you. Anybody have any concerns by adding to E five? All right, good. Council, have any board reports to share? I'll just say what a busy weekend. I started off at the farmer's market and then went to support the majority crossing, which was extremely well attended. And then I came to the downtown get down.
Downtown get down.
Downtown and hung out there for a few hours and I went home and popped on my couch. It was a great weekend and thank everybody who put that on. Dead time merchants and possible boat, I think, was in charge of that. And it was a great function, lots of music and bands, pretty fun. So. All right, anybody else? All right. Has everyone reviewed the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yes.
We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor moves to approve the consent agenda as published.
Okay, we have motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, most carries. Tonight, we have a presentation from Finance Director Mike Giddens.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. This presentation tonight is on the monthly financial report for the close month of April. So just a few highlights. On this first page, I just wanted to point out that the gap is closing a little bit and we're moving that needle in the right direction on expenditures exceeding revenue. It's better. It's not perfect, but it's going in the right direction. And I think that's to everyone's credit. Directors, cost center managers who are trying to watch their budget and reduce some of those expenses. As each month goes on, we're also able to estimate a little bit more accurately as we see, you know, the first half property taxes come in and have some idea where those are landing. Each month more that we get taxes than just gives us that much more authenticity as to our estimate and where it's at. So I'm pleased to look at that and see that. As an example, last month, the unfavorable variance between estimated and budget was at three hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And in April, it's down to a hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So that's the progress in the right direction that I'm talking about. It's improved. The general fund revenues are still estimated about where we've been showing them. There may be some slight improvements in certain months as we go along. But overall, that effect, I don't see changing a whole lot on the revenue side, which I guess is both good and bad, but we don't see more, but it's good that we're not seeing more negative.
Yes, Mike, can you tell us a little bit about where the about fifty thousand dollars in expenditure savings has come from?
Sure. I think really what we're doing there is since we haven't realized any of the actual savings from the supplemental, since it hasn't been implemented fully yet. That's just been some savings we're seeing still in some unfilled positions that we're able to more accurately estimate because we are sitting on some of those that are now fully paid out from their resignation is what I mean and any owed vacation and such that we go. So we're able to get a little bit more of an accurate picture. And then just some overall savings in places where people's awareness is up just a little bit on watching what they're spending and the areas of supplies and professional services. So that's really where we're realizing that right now. On the just continuing that expenditure discussion, I think as we see May and June come up and we have more data and the supplementals implemented, you'll see that. Yeah, I'm hoping anyway, continue to go in the right direction. That's assuming everything stays about where it is right now. And that's always hard to predict, but I think that's where we'll see things going. If we could go forward to page seven, wanted to point out a couple of things on the fund balances. On page seven, fund balances changed slightly with the general funds slowing spending. And as we get more financial data, we'll see that come into line just a little bit more. But as you look across, again, I'm comparing this to the month prior, which we have is March, it just improved slightly. Again, mostly due to the general fund, but as we get more data for the rest of the funds, we see that just become a little bit more accurate and in line. And on the bottom of the page, Deputy Mayor, you had asked for some us to start giving a little bit more information on FTE. This is our first attempt at that. We're going to work on getting some hours data also, but to try to add something to kind of to show where we were at with budget and to show what vacancies we have across all our funds. We broke it out with a little bit more detail in the general fund by department. Since we're focused on that a little bit more and we have that data as part of our annual budget process. But then just so you can see when we talk about some savings by unfilled positions, that's where that is. And I know you had asked for a little bit different data and we're working to get that, but this was is kind of a step to get us started since we were in process with this report already.
It's a good, this is a good piece of information because, you know, we've been looking at that number of about a hundred positions within the city. And then what actually gets billed out in terms of billable time and what we pay staff, what the actual full-time equivalent ends up being, right? So we realize from this is the general fund houses the majority, if not the yeah, the lion, the lion's share of our staff.
Correct.
Right? So sixty-nine employees for that.
And, you know, and in all fairness, some of those are charged, you know, back through either our metropolitan park district or some, but the majority absolutely is housed under the general fund. So we'll keep working on that. My hope is that through the payroll system, we can get some reports on hours so we can see, okay, in this month where we had these vacancies, then also how many hours were work, how many were on maybe leave and start to put a little bit more data with that, as you pointed out, because it's helpful for us, I think, to have more concrete information about where that our personnel costs, as we've always said, are our biggest. So if we can really start to attribute that a little bit more each month to say, okay, it's due to these vacancies, it's due to these kinds of conditions, I think that helps us overall. And then if we could go to page nine, this has the citywide overview of funds. And I wanted to point out just a couple of things on here. I know it's a lot of data on this, these pages. The capital resources general with the adoption of the, assuming the supplemental budget is adopted this evening, will have approval to carry over grant dollars into twenty twenty-three, and that will approve, improve that official statement of the fund. I will tell you, we're also working hard and I know the city manager updated you in your weekly report on that solid waste fund and the closeout of the C Street landfill. So we're still getting a lot of information from the Department of Ecology and getting those invoices paid and then also the grant revenue that we're expecting from it. So we're working carefully on that. That will likely need to be trued up the solid waste fund in our last supplemental of the year. When we really have more accurate information on where that's ending. And then we should be in a position with that fund then with the balance to just be funding that monitoring that has to happen year to year. I that's where we'll be on that. So that's a presentation of just the overview a bit on where we are at for the month that's closed for April. We're working right now. I'm getting May closed out and we'll have that report to you next month. So eventually we'll catch up and get to the half year point of the year. And that'll, I think, is always a really good measure at that fifty percent mark, both for you, for us as staff and for budget development.
It, it, it's helpful go month by month. It really is. It.
Good.
You know, instead of doing six months to a year, it's really good idea to do it every month and it does help. Thank you.
On, I'm on many, many boards and sales tax has been down about five percent for March. Is that what we're seeing as well?
We did. We saw it off about twenty thousand dollars from where it was the prior year. And I've asked a couple of other folks in public agencies and they are saying the same thing and none of us can really put our finger on the why. At first, you know, what I really wanted to know was, was it just the city? Because that, you know, could just be something we really did we have a big project going on or something like that? But since it's across the board with prices still being a little bit high, I think it's something for us to just watch. I don't know that anybody really has an answer, but we were down because I look at that. The minute it comes in, where are we in line with a year prior? Because that's really a pretty good mark and we were down.
They didn't send him to shop local. Any questions or comments? Right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Look, which Jay Harris has a presentation for us about the transportation benefit district.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Jay Harris, Republic Works Director. So the transportation benefit district were required by RCW to give you an annual report. And so this is for the year of twenty twenty-two and we're month six, we're June now, so a little late maybe on the twenty-two report, but we got it. Okay, we're getting it to you. So that first picture you see there, that's Railroad Avenue, looking towards one oh one. That's like a week after they paved. It's amazing how the road changes. If you drive it tonight, it's not as vibrant. And a year from now will be even less vibrant. So if you can figure out a way to keep asphalt really black and stripes really vibrant, it'd be a good invention. Next page, please. So this annual report, like I said, is required by RCW to do that. The finance department also has some reporting on the the fund and that sort of thing that they need to do for the auditor. So the TBD, the transportation benefit district is a point two percent sales tax. And in two thousand and fifteen is when it was established. And the city council oversees the expenditures and the revenues. And that's why this final reports need to be given every year. And the projects are shown in the fiscal year budget and then which is adopted by council. And then you also see the resolutions for the projects too, as they, they come through. So why was the TBD at Sabbath two thousand and fifteen? Just AG Street infrastructure and we needed a better revenue source. We still don't, the TBD isn't enough. We're getting about a half a million from the general fund every year for the street fund. And the TBD revenue off to the right, there's six hundred and nine thousand. We have some other revenues that come in. The street fund's about a two million dollar fund. So the the use tax a point two percent, the legislature did some things recently, go up to point three percent and tax with the voter approval. Our current district runs out in two thousand and sixteen, the, the approval for it. And so we'll probably be going back to the voters prior to that. What I said sixteen, it's already expired.
Was that it?
Twenty twenty-six.
I live in the past. So and then what are we using the TBD for? You know, when I started here, I saw leveraging of the transportation benefit district dollars. So like Western Gateway Railroad Avenue, you know, we took a TBD dollars and worked with the Transportation Improvement Board with the state and leveraged about twelve cents on the dollar with our twelve cents and their eighty-eight cents. By the time the project hit the road, though, we actually had to put more funds in because of cost escalation and that sort of thing. But using that, when you don't have enough money, leveraging your money is a good idea. So some of the projects that we're done, there's a bottom right there, Civic Center Parking Lot, Brockdale Road Paving. We're designing Safe Routes to School right now. That's been a consultant. And then the Western Gateway paving has been some of the TBD projects. And then for for twenty twenty-four, what are the planned projects? Okay. Olympic Highway North, we're going to leverage TBD dollars and get it paved from about, what is it? C Street around right in there, all the way up to Wallace Nealon. The pavements ravelling very quickly. It was paved quite some time ago. It definitely needs something before we're into full base rock replacement and that sort of thing. It gets terribly expensive. So we're going to be working on that. Also be working on our local street paving project. Todd Rhodes and I are working on another county project. Working with them and try to overlay some roads, probably up in the angle side zone, Turner, that sort of thing. Up in that neighborhood this year. So we have some plans for the money. If you go to the next slide, here it is Civic Center Lot. So the TBD just funded the alley portion of the lot. There's a house and some people that drive along the alley there. We also had Brockdale Road Paving, which is good. It's completed. It came in under budget too, which was good. Western Gateway, I'll be giving the final report on that probably in the next six weeks or so. But the sidewalks, the paving, the striping, the storm infrastructure was big. And then Safe Routes to School, that's under design right now. So there's three different projects. There's the ADA ramps and crosswalks at Seventh and Franklin. So Safeway sits over there to the side. And then you have Evergreen Elementary. There's some improvements there to improve it right at the school and to come in off of Railroad Avenue. And then the last one was up at the high school over the Huff and Pub. There's a parking lot across the street there. And there just needs to be a better crossing there. So that's the final report for the Transportation Benefit District twenty twenty-two.
Thanks. Comments or questions?
Exciting. Looking good.
What are you, what are you hearing about TIB Transportation Improvement Board funds for like capital roadway projects versus like active transportation projects being prioritized a little bit differently these days? Like, are we still going to have potentially access to that funding for pavement jobs or is it shifting? A little bit?
Yeah. So I mean, the projects in there are up, you know, two million, two and a half million is sort of pressing those guys on the amounts. We had a debrief of why we didn't get Olympic Highway North last year. And we were so actively using their money here. We hadn't spent it all. So that was their excuse of why we didn't get it. So they, it's a good contender this next year. The, the funds normally are used for a lot of just road repair type of projects, restoration projects. It sort of seems to be their primary goal. I haven't seen them shifting away from that. And we have a lot of that right now. So, you know, we, we're using them for, you know, the collector type of roadways, the higher volume roadways. And when we can get, you know, eighty cents, eighty-eight cents of their money to our twelve cents, that's a good deal. You know, for the city. On Olympic Highway North, a lot of the project is a replacement of the head, the ADA handicap ramps all the way up. None of them meet, there might be one set that needs specification, but they're, they're pretty far out of spec. So a lot of those ramps are expensive too. So that's a good part of that particular project.
Well, that also addressed like illumination and crosswalks as well, that project.
We'll be looking at the crosswalks. Yeah. Up at K Street, we're looking at the new loops through a signal. I'd like to try to fund a new controller up there. I'm probably using our, our funds. I don't know if the state would assist us in the controller replacement, but we're talking about that because the controller is from the nineties. And we need to update the electrical, you know, components within the cabinet there. We cut in new loops. So you know, we don't use the optical loops or the optical cameras. So when you're at an intersection, they're not videotaping you typically. Those are sensors up there that recognize when a car is there. And the older way of doing it is they put magnetic loops in the pavement. We're still on that. The guy thinks it's a little more reliable, especially when the fog rolls in or heavy rain, that those other sensors aren't as accurate as, as the magnetic ones. So, yeah, so we have some improvements there. We're not then the the local, no, Safe Routes to School, no, local road safety plan has a project there for some bump out, some additional pedestrian amenities at that intersection to make it a little safer. So.
Thank you. I always have to mention at least once a year that we leave crosswalks at K and King Street where the new Mountain View School is. The kids are just bouncing across that road. And the issue was there was no ramp there. Is why we couldn't put a crosswalk there. And I think this is probably year five. I brought that up. And also something over in front of Oakland Bay Junior High, where there's four lanes of traffic. And I'm sure you've heard me say this before. One car stops on each side and the car in the middle doesn't stop and there's a kid in the middle of the road. And I really think we gotta do something there. I don't know what can be done there.
Okay.
It's a, it's dangerous. And I, I do have an old video I can send you. I sent it to Mike Dill. But I was there five minutes and it was crossing the street, two cars stopped from each direction and it was so close, the kid hit the part of the tank. So I really did need to work on that.
And we, we've looked at both of those already. They, I can't remember the local road safety plan that came to council about a year ago. I think one or both of those was in there, but it wasn't one of the higher rated projects. We're, we're doing the highest rated projects in there. So as we move forward, you know, we can we're getting the highest level of where you'd have higher accident rates, safety and that sort of thing, down to the lower ones. So, you know, we're starting at the top and working our way down. So let me go look at that list again and remind myself of the other projects that weren't funded by the state in the local road safety plan. And then once we get through Safe Routes to School, you know, there's another round of funding opportunity, you know, that we're out designed. I just, I went through the sixty percent plans. I should be getting ninety-six percent plans. We should be able to bid and that in the next few months. So I'll be coming back to you guys for the Safe Routes to School for this round. But once we start spending that money, because the construction money is the bigger money than the just design money, we'd be eligible for another round of Safe Routes to School funding.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
All right. Now Jordan has information for us about a traffic box wrap project.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Tonight I bring you art recommendations for the upcoming traffic box rap project on behalf of the Shell Arts Commission. Um, this project is designed to lower the graffiti around town on all the traffic boxes and just bring some beautification to the town. And then for this round, we're planning on installing four. The Arts Commission did a call to artists through social media and press. The deadline was May fifth. And then we had about sixteen community members. We did open this up to the county. So any Mason County members were able to participate. Um, the Arts Commission did their first round of jury on May tenth to make sure all the art that was submitted met the criteria they were looking for. And then it went out to public vote, which was from on Open Town Hall, which was from May fifteenth through the twenty-first. And then we had the, took the top four choices. And then we had about one thousand, a little over thirteen hundred responses for that public vote, which is more than we had from the last one that we did. And then the Arts Commission did one more final approval of the four boxes and picked locations. And then because we are now on to state boxes, we had to get state approvals. So then we shipped them off to the state for final approval from them. And then tonight I am bringing you for another approval for you guys. And in your packet, you'll find the four art pieces. Avery Homan did my Washington, which we plan on putting at First and Coda. Lori Heinz ended the whistle, go silent at First and Row Road. Cindy River did the High Still Bridge. Shall we do that one on Olympic Highway South and Cascade? And then Pat Denning with Washington Roadies would be at Olympic Highway North and Wallace Nealon Boulevard. And if you have any questions, we're just hoping to push this for further consideration.
Thank you, Jordan. And would sign if a public comment.
Excuse me, one second. If you recognize some of the donors.
Yes, we have a few sponsors for this project. We had, besides the Arts Commission, we had Shelton Rotary, Martha Reed Foundation and Peninsula Art Association, who are also sponsoring this project. Thank you for that.
Donna, has anyone sent a public comment?
No, there isn't anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on the wraps? All right, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to forward the traffic box wrap project to the July eleventh council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? These are awesome. Yeah, great.
Here we are. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second for the traffic box wrap project to the July eleventh council meeting for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right. Mike is back up again. Finance Director has information for us about amending the twenty twenty-three budget.
Thank you. This is the second timeline before you with this for asking for your action on it. I know at the last meeting during public comment, there was a question. I think the city manager answered that. He was correct. So I think that that was answered. There have been no changes to this supplemental budget request.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone sent a public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Do we have a motion or could we have a reading of ordinance number two zero zero two dash zero four two three?
Ordinance number two zero zero two zero four two three. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending the annual budget for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to ordinance number two zero zero two to zero four two three as presented.
Second.
Right. Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number two zero zero two dash zero four two three as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right. Jay's backups, like back and forth, back and forth, right? Jay has details about vacating a portion of Fifth Street.
Good evening, Council Jay Harris, again, your Public Works Director. So as you know, the Shelton Police Department utilizes most of the parking here on Fifth Street. That's from Coda to Grove. We got a grant from the state to install fencing and electric gates. It's going to limit public access. We're going to proposing sidewalk access on the east side of the roadway. And to allow for the closure of the roadway, we need to vacate the, the, the street right away. So public travel can't use it. Anyways, I was at the last council meeting with the same resolution. And so the way the state process works is I have to have a resolution identifying when the ordinance hearing is. And then you guys have the three touch rule, which is two meetings through the resolutions, two, two, and then two meetings through the ordinance. So this is the last of the resolution. So the ordinance reading will be on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And then the second reading of the ordinance is going to be on July eighteenth, following the Fourth of July is on a meeting date. So that's why we're hitting the eleventh. That, that meeting's been canceled. So nothing has changed since my last briefing.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone sign a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Maybe have a reading of resolution one two seven two dash zero five two three.
Resolution number one two seven two dash zero five two three. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, initiating procedures to vacate Fifth Street between Grove Street and Coda Street.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number one two seven two dash zero five two three as presented.
Second.
Comments or questions? This was a hundred percent grant funded, correct? This was a hundred percent grant funded, correct?
The uh, fencing was grant funded. I don't know if we had any city funds on it.
Hundred percent grant funded.
That's what I thought. Correct. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to second to adopt resolution one two seven two dash zero five two three as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Senior Planner Jason Doze has information about an annexation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, at your last regular meeting on June sixth, you held a public hearing to consider the annexation of forty acres of land located just north of Shelton city limits. It's designated in our comprehensive plan as neighborhood residentially zoned in our urban growth area. Um, you held a public hearing. We didn't receive any substantive comments. Um, nothing's changed since that time and we are recommending to do a second reading and adopt the ordinance that would annex this particular property into city limits.
Thank you, Jason. Has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak on the annexation? All right, maybe we're reading of ordinance number two zero zero five dash zero five two three.
Ordinance number two zero zero five dash zero five two three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, annexing certain property located within the City of Shelton urban growth area into the City of Shelton corporate limits.
Thank you, Donna. You're welcome. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve ordinance number two zero zero five to zero five two three as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Right, we have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number two zero zero five dash zero five two three to officially annex the subject property into the Shelton city limits. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Right, Jordan's back. Jordan has details for us about park regulations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I bring back to the ordinance on park regulations. Uh, the goal for this is to update uh, minor stuff in the ordinance currently and the big emphasis on no vaping in the parks. Um, with the addition of updating park signage. Um, there has not been any changes since the last time it was presented to you, so we're just looking to move it up and adopt.
Thank you, Jordan. Has anyone signed up for public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on the no waiting policy? All right, maybe we have a reading of ordinance two zero zero seven dash zero five two three.
Ordinance number two zero zero seven dash zero five two three. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter eight point six eight of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to park regulations.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number two zero zero seven dash zero five three as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number two zero zero seven dash zero five two three as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we are now at our, our addition E five, which is NEPA and.
Actually, C F O N O D O S will present it to you, Jason.
All right, thank you again. I, I apologize for asking for this to be uh, put on the meeting at the last minute. Um, as the city manager said, as I think you're aware, the Shelton Youth Connection has been at their current site at one, two, three South Second. Since twenty nineteen, they've, um, you know, they operate a, not a shelter, but uh, basically in-house services for youths aged twelve to twenty-four. Help them with schoolwork, help them find housing. Um, they, they provide case management services for youth that might be experiencing homelessness or, you know, couch surfing sort of thing. They've, over the years, been able to acquire some funding to rent some houses for youth and provide some oversight and, and in aid for them, but they've been working for about the last year, year and a half, I believe, on purchasing the structure they're at and applied for several different grants um, through the state and through the, through the federal government to purchase the facility and rehab the second floor into twelve living units for youth aged eighteen to twenty-four. Earlier this year, the council signed a letter of support for some grant funding they received. And I believe it was in February or March, our staff started working with Shelton Youth Connection and they hired consultant to perform the reason I'm here. Um, their NEPA review for some grant funding they received through the um, through HUD, Housing and Urban Development, a, a federal government entity that, that funds these sorts of projects. We got through the process. Um, the city is what's called a responsible entity in this case. We worked hand to hand with their consultants, made sure appropriate noticing was sent out to tribes, other government entities, state and federal entities. Um, worked with them to review the project and we are at the finish line basically. And what needs to happen now is the certifying officer, I think I'm using the right terms, those official terms for these, yeah, certifying officer, which is the city's highest elected official, which would be the mayor. We're asking that the council authorize the mayor to sign the fund release form, which certifies the environmental review and allows them to the, to start the clock. I think it's a fifteen or thirty day clock so that they can eventually access their funding and hopefully begin the project.
Thank you, Jason. Donna, has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, they haven't, Mr. Mayor.
Like to speak? Terry.
Good evening, council members. On behalf of, behalf of the Youth Connection, I want to thank you very much. My name's Terry Drexler. I'm the chairman of board and I'm also um, doing the project management for this project. Um, I just wanted to also add a little something. Um, so we, we managed to raise three point six million dollars, which was way over what we thought it would take. But because it's an older building, it does sit in the floodplain this much. And all this other stuff really created a huge amount of environmental review. And Jason's been amazing and I can't thank you enough for um, expediting this. Um, this approval and signature. Um, our biggest concern is that I am not allowed to purchase the building. I've got the money to purchase the building until the environmental review has been done. And so after you, if it gets signed tonight, then it goes on for one more fifteen day waiting period and we can let the building owners say, okay, we're done. I really want to thank you all for, again, expediting this and um, we didn't expect to have to go this far, but appreciate it and um, well, I'll be back probably with something else, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you. All right, any other comments?
I just wanted to say to Terry.
Just to finish.
Okay.
I don't think I ever made a public comment to you before. So uh, as you probably know, in the city, Jeff Shelton and I reside in the Mason County, I will let Youth Connect know and you know that because of their work, some people that come before me are not in jail. Uh, they've gotten clothing for job interviews and have an address to use, so I don't have to put them in jail. And it helps keep some people I see out of jail and out of trouble. And so I greatly support the fact that you are supporting them. I want to thank them for their work.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. So any more public comment? After we go. All right. Uh, motion for a second. I know. We haven't, we haven't done a motion, so may, maybe we have a motion on the Shelton Youth Connection NEPA request for release of funds and certification.
I moved to waive the three touch policy and authorized the mayor to sign the request for release of funds and certification as certifying officer for the City of Shelton.
Second. Right, comments or questions?
I just wanted to tell Terry and Susan, she was not here, but how much work you've done and it's being seen and being known as being felt. Thank you so much for what you're doing for the community and um, Youth Connection is such a great part of our community, just picked up the parks with, with the duck and trail. So thank you so much and uh, uh, keep coming up with great projects and we'll keep improving them. Thank you so much.
I want to say I am really proud of your organization. It has um, far exceeded what I expected of it and I am, I am really impressed with the progress you've made in our community and the help you've been in our community. And I feel like the only impact that I have seen has been positive from this. So um, being that I, I was a little hesitant, I'm going to admit, so uh, good job.
Been a great partner to work with.
Yeah, yeah.
City, so appreciate you, you all for other nonprofits that we work with, so thank you.
You've done a great job and come a long ways in a short amount of time.
Right.
And you do good things down there.
Success story immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to, to approve Shelton Youth Connections NEPA request for release of funds and certification and waive the three touch rule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I got confused because it wasn't written down. Had to make it up. All right.
You did it.
Good job. All right. Mark, will you give us your city manager?
Absolutely, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. Um, a few things for you tonight. I want to remind you that um, upstairs customer service hours will be altered starting July first. Um, working on press releases and signage and information for that, but I want to take every opportunity to let the public know. That starting July one, uh, the upstairs service counter for permitting and planning and administration will be closed between one and two, Monday through Thursday. So our hours will be eight thirty to one and then again two to four thirty upstairs. And then Fridays, eight thirty to one will close from one to four thirty and be available by appointment only. Um, so we'll make sure and get information out to the public on how they can apply for a building permit online, pay their utility bills online. Uh, put in uh, job tickets uh, for code enforcement or street um, street issues, um, but also contact staff and get avail, get ahold of us for availability for, for meetings in person. So this is in uh, result of supplemental budget just passed, passed tonight and some reduction of uh, staff at the customer service counter up there. Uh, I've been informed by Public Works Director Harris that Friday, the state will be in doing long line, long line striping uh, all around town. So they plan on getting this all done in one day. So you'll be seeing a striping machine and vehicles going around placing cones and uh, getting all this striping done in partnership uh, with Wash, Wash State Department of Transportation. So looking forward to that. Um, there's some road reconstruction um, coming up on the south side of town with Cascade Natural Gases uh, pipeline replacement in that area. So they've been cutting up the streets and patching them. They have to come in and do some chip seal and repairs uh, to the streets up there. Uh, we should have some information out by the end of the week, what dates those will be occurring, going to be soon, potentially next week. Um, so we want to get ahead of that as much as we can, let people know that that's going to be occurring. Uh, let's see, Jordan mentioned earlier tonight that movies in the park uh, have been scheduled, working on that and excited to present that project again to the community this year and hopefully have even more people out uh, in uh, Nealon Park on Friday evenings. And then at our police department, uh, Detective Sergeant Daniel Patton has recently um, graduated from the National FBI Academy. So a ten week program back in Washington DC, um, very prestigious uh, um, accomplishment for him and for the Shelton Police Department. So really proud to have uh, another graduate um, from that academy in here, the Shelton Police Department. That is all I have tonight.
All right, thank you, Mark. Comments or questions for Mark? No? All right, at this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic not listed on the agenda. Donna, have we had anyone sign up for public comment tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We have Dean Jewitt.
Sorry, my little setup there. Dean Jewitt, lifelong Mason County member, happy to be here. Uh, my wife couldn't be here. It was her last day of school. So she was a little tired. You can only imagine with a bunch of second graders. Uh, one thing that she always says when she's talking about any decisions that need to be made within the school or basically how she, how she runs her classroom and leads her life. What's best for kids? You've heard her say that. Okay? I'm going to twist it a little bit and I'm going to say what's best for Shelton. Okay, so if all the decisions that we make as citizens and what we do and all the decisions that you guys make up here and Mark and our police chief and everybody else, you need to ask yourself, what's best for Shelton? Okay? Uh, having no code enforcement officers, is that best for Shelton? Uh, non-enforcement of our street camping, is that best for Shelton? Uh, the park abuses that we deal with. The, the Brewer Park being turned over by Chief Beeson to let it just run amok. And those were words from her mouth. Okay? Take a look at the, the uh, the Chamber of Commerce where she stated it. It's on tape. Uh, so on our building and our property, we had a trespasser that came by two or three times. And he finally got taken to jail. Uh, the police officer that I dealt with was very rude and I made sure that he understood it and he knew it. Okay, when we call in to nine one one or not emergency or we deal with a police officer, we do not want them to be rude. You know, they have to deal with a lot and I respect ninety-seven point nine percent of them. Okay? But when they're rude to us as a civilian and we're trying to report a process or a problem and we're made to feel that, well, why report it? Nothing's going to happen. Okay, that's not good. That's not what we want to carry. Uh, our uh, our budget shortfall that we have, seventy percent of the calls of the fire department go towards Brewer Park and Community Lifeline. What does that do to our budget? Six times a day, the garbage cans have to be empty. What does that do to our budget? What about all the police officers that spend all of their time rolling on these type of calls? What does that do to our budget? So we just have to ask ourselves, what's best for Shelton? Okay, now on to my visual aids. Okay, we got some smore stuff here. Because it's okay to have an open fire in Brewer Park. It's okay to have open flame on Teresa Johnson Trail. And it's even okay to have open flame on the sidewalk across from the clock tower. So if you guys want to join me, let me know.
Thank you, Dean. All right, any other?
I don't have anyone else signed up for in person, but I do have one for Zoom and that is Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor Nesko, Deputy Mayor Schmidt and fellow council members. Tonight, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the types of services that are available for homeless individuals. So you all have a better understanding, including the public, about what can be offered. The first is rapid rehousing. That is for people who are homeless. It's money and supportive services. And that can be offered for up to twenty-four months. It's an intervention that hopefully keeps people from having very short periods of homelessness. The second is permanent supportive housing. That's a permanent housing program with supportive services. And it's typically offered to people with the highest vulnerability who've had a hard time living independently. The next is transitional housing, which is for homeless individuals. It's limited housing with supportive services and that can also be offered up to twenty-four months. There's shelters. There's different kinds of shelters. Those are for homeless individuals and they're supportive services. Some of the listed types are emergency shelters, which I think you're all familiar with. Um, Community Lifeline is providing those services. Day shelters, which are during the day and yet generally in the hours between five AM and eight PM. Drop-in shelters, which are evening shelters from five PM to eight AM. And then there's also some preventative services such as targeted prevention assistance, which is short-term money between two to six months. It's for people who are at risk of becoming homeless. And that can hopefully, when they get that kind of funding, stabilize them so that they don't stay homeless. And then the last one is outreach services. And that's supportive services and it's for homeless individuals and it's for individuals to go out into the community, go to the encampments and find out specifically what is it that they need and which one of these interventions is going to work best. I'm grateful in this city that we have so many agencies that actually each one of us fill our own niche. And between all of us, we, we're able to provide that entire spectrum of care, so I'm really grateful to hear about Youth Connections and what they're doing um, and Crossroad Housing. Um, they're all doing phenomenal things. Turning Point also, so Youth Connections, if I forget anyone, I'm sorry. But I'm just grateful to all of our partners that are working so hard to do this, this really difficult work and to the city for your support. Um, so thank you so much for the opportunity to educate everyone about what the services are.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak? Yes, come on up and just tell if you live in the city or the county.
Tony.
All right.
Um, hello, my name is Catherine Johnson. I am the executive director for the community society Mason County. Um, I wanted to start off by, I like that, sharing a little bit of information on our organization. So our organization has a couple different um, main branches. So our organization has a couple different main branches. Our primary focus is overall general support to the county residents of Mason County City and County, I should say. We don't discriminate. We provide foster homes, adoptions and a low-cost span neuter and veterinary clinic. So we have done adoptions and fostering for years on a very, very small scale. We have increased that scale exponentially over the last three years. Last year, we took in four hundred and eight animals. That is just from Mason County and the city of Shelton. We do not take in animals from other counties or places, locations, anywhere else, just Mason County. Our low-cost veterinary services, however, are open to everyone. Out of county residents can utilize our services and definitely do with the people that drive from all over. So last year, four hundred and eight animals. We took into our care. This year, we're, my gosh, over three hundred and thirty already. We had a huge puppy season this year that we didn't really anticipate having. We do have a new location in Belfair where we are providing our low-cost veterinary services. We started providing low-cost veterinary services last year. The clinic has been open for about fifteen months. Our clinic in Belfair specifically has been open about nine months. This year alone, we have provided almost over twelve hundred span neuter surgeries. We have excellent group of veterinary staff that provides the surgeries. They are our staff, so we have many time we need them. And and we're really proud of the work that we're doing. We're not just doing spays and neuters. We are also doing additional low-cost services when our local vet offices call upon us. We have dogs that have come in with abscesses, cats with abscesses, animals needing tumors removed, senior dogs that just need blood work. We do free vaccines. We're really trying to help Mason County as a whole get their animals more vaccinated. In we we have very limited vet services here in Mason County. I'm not sure if everyone's truly aware of that. We have Bell Town Vets, Shelton Vet and Hague Vet. That is it besides Jasmine Feist, who does large animal. So with none of those options being available on the weekends, including ours, unfortunately, it is limited, incredibly limited. And Bell Town is now corporate, so all of those different entities. So I just really wanted to share kind of what we're doing. And and I I did have some questions, but apparently I jabbed too much.
You could wait around and maybe talk to the city manager after the meeting.
Yeah, okay, absolutely. Thank you.
And us.
Yep.
Wait around, too. Is there, yes, come on.
Hello, I'd like to introduce myself, Dr. Sigmund from Get and Rescue Mason County. And I had a few questions. I came to a meeting last Tuesday, which I understood we weren't allowed to talk. So here I am to ask. Do we have an operating animal shelter at this time in the city limits?
We can't answer questions. You can wait till after the meeting and talk to the city manager as well if it's like.
Excuse me?
We don't answer questions during the meeting, but you can.
Oh, okay, great. That's fine. I like to say there's only three entities here in Mason County with the Mason County Human Society and Belfair, myself, which is, which is Get and Rescue Mason County is private and Adopt a Pet is private also. There's only three of us. That's it. We are overrun and over, it's horrendous. I took in seven hundred cats and kittens last year. Four hundred and ninety-three were adopted. I work with Mason County Humane Society very, very, all the time and I'm grateful to have them. If we didn't have them, we would be floundering even more. And I think Mason County, the city of Shelton and the county need to work together to get the animal control situation under control at this time. There's a lot of things that they can do. I'd like to see them reach out to us three organizations because no one has talked to us at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. All right, anyone else? All right, at this time, the council is going to go meet for a dedicated session with specific permits of a public employee as allowed by RCW four two point three zero dot one one zero. Will be in a ticket session for twenty minutes. We may have action to follow. I call this regular meeting back to order. We went in and had a discussion about our options for city manager and we have decided to offer interim city manager Mark Seagull with a permanent position and I would like a motion.
I move to appoint Mark Seagull as the permanent city manager and to authorize the mayor and deputy mayor to negotiate a contract.
Second. All right, comments and questions? Mark, in the short time you've you've been our interim city manager, you've proven that you have the dedication and the will and the ability to run the city. And I think that you are the perfect choice for this position and you're dedicated and in your twenty-nine years here, you know, or, you know, our budget issues and you know some of the other issues over the years and I think you can just keep the city moving forward. Anybody else?
Totally agree. Like I said, I've known Mark probably from twenty the minute he stepped in this, in the city to go to work. And he was my boss boss for a while and enjoyed working under him. And so I'm very pleased.
Right. I've been happy to work with Mark for directly and I just can mention somebody, not by name, but just by what they look like and he'll know them in this town. So Mark knows everybody. He's, he's locked in on all the issues and all the angles and he listens to everybody and I love his approach and I think he's a great choice. Right here.
Anyone else?
Thank you for being willing to take this on.
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity, the challenge to serve my community. As I said before, when the interim appointment was made, I I didn't want to be a warm body, filling a seat. I think that I approached it in such a manner and that won't change moving forward. I have every intent to keep the city moving forward, right, and not not staying still, but always driving forward and make sure that we meet the council's goals and our community's expectations, right? Because we have them to ultimately respond to and report to. So that's an exciting exciting endeavor, exciting opportunity for me in my hometown, the community that I live in.
And you proved your ability with the parks. We have awesome parks in the city. And so that's just a little bit of it. Of it. Thank you.
And one more thing here on mine. I want to recognize our staff. We we spoke and I have taken opportunity to speak with our staff at all different levels recently and really explain to them what has been happening with the budget and what expectations are and moving forward, what, how we're going to communicate with each other and form, continue to form a team. And it's really important to recognize them because they are all dedicated employees. They care deeply about the job they are doing here for the city of Shelton as we ask them to do more and do more with less resources. It's really important that we recognize them. We keep them healthy. We keep them safe and we keep them moving forward as a team altogether. So I really look forward to working with all these important individuals as we, as we work through this process as well.
Yeah, public service is a choice. Nobody's forced to be here. What people could do, choose to be here, do so for a reason and it's not the paycheck by any means. It's a nice thing for sure, but it's not the paycheck by any means. And yeah, I fully agree with you. We have great staff here. I trust it'll get even better with you at the helm and we're, we're, we're heading into some difficult decision-making, but we're going to come out in such a better position on the other end of this. It's, it's going to be amazing. That's going to be great to have you there to to shepherd that through and and make, turn the, turn the page for sure. So good times.
Thank you. All right, so you can get this motion right. We have a motion and a second to appoint Mark Seagull as the permanent city manager. The council authorizes the mayor and deputy mayor to negotiate a contract. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's.
Okay.
All right.
You definitely made it.
Yeah. We also have any new items for discussion? I just wanted to mention that in my downtown visit this, this weekend, there was an incident when I was having a discussion with some people down there about you know, the homeless and, and they were telling me that there is a gentleman being inappropriate for a good half an hour around kids. And I said, well, did you call the police? Well, no, I didn't. That's a, if somebody's being inappropriate, then you should call the police. I called the police and they showed up and he was arrested. Call the police if it's a legitimate crime. I'm not saying call the police to chase a homeless person with a banana. I'm saying if there is a crime being committed, call the police. You know, you shouldn't have waited half an hour for somebody to call. But I think.
And he handled it quickly and well.
And they handle them very quickly. They did. All right, any other new items for discussion? I'd make sure I get this right. This meeting is, oh, we, July fourth falls on a Tuesday this year. Our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July eleventh at six PM. We also have a study session June twenty seventh at six PM. This meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-three PM.